Wessels.
Here.
Weber. Collins.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Boom, everyone is here. Okay, so this is a special meeting. There's only one item on the agenda. It's a public hearing to set this year's tax rates. Without getting too much into the weeds on this, the Finance Committee has met. We worked through this thing. We used my little tax calculator to look at different rates. And you know, there's always some question about this for people who've seen the public hearing. You know, what we always put out is the maximum, so if council decides to go a different direction, we can do that because we can't do anything that's not covered in this meeting, right? So that said, the proposal this year is a fairly substantial tax cut. I'm trying to get back to my tax calculator document here. And you know, we can publish this online for anyone that wants to see it. You know, the good news is, as a whole, revenues once again are up. Expenses have been pretty static and have been well-controlled. Kudos to the staff. As always, you guys do a great job on the expense side of this. You know, we've picked up some new revenue through the Duke franchise fee that's going better than expected, and just in general, revenues are up. So, the proposal that came out of the Finance Committee was to lower the rate to .199, which would be a roughly, well, it's not roughly, it's a 7.44% cut from last year's rates. And just for frame of reference, and for anyone that wants to see it, you know, out on the website, we put together this chart that shows the property taxes for the last 26 years. So last year, we dropped the rate from, and I'm old, so I have to make this bigger, sorry, and I'm not driving the TV. We went from 248 to 215, so we would be going from 215 or .215 to .199. Again, that works out to a... Come on, computer, cooperate. Say what? Well, I'm looking at something different here. Yeah, so I appreciate you making it bigger. It does help, but it doesn't help what I'm looking at on this screen. So again, the proposal for the real property tax rate, because we have to set the real property tax and the tangible tax rate, the proposal would be to set the real property tax rate to .199, so just under 2%. It's again, a 7.44% cut. And then for the personal property tax rate, what you're paying on cars, boats, that sort of thing, right? If you look at that guy, we're proposing to basically leave it the same as last year. This is one of those things over the past few years, you know, part of the analysis we do on this every year is what do these rates do to the increase or decrease in revenues? How do we project that over time? How do we look at the trends over time? And this whole personal property tax thing has been problematic for some time. You know, I have the numbers in front of me here, so in 2022, the value that we got from the PVA, and I also want to remind people, because I know folks will argue, well, you cut the rate, but I may have paid more taxes. Well, yes, you might, because your property values went up. We don't control that. We have nothing to do with that. That is the Property Value Administrator. And I bring that up because they set the rates, the county's broken down into quarters, they go through every quarter, sorry, every quadrant, the four quadrants, and reassess the values. The good news for you as a property owner is your property value has gone probably way up, which means when you go to sell it someday, you're going to make a lot more money. The downside, of course, is that means more taxes for you, even if we cut the rates. So, we get this information from the PVA, and here's my point. In 2022, the personal property, the tangible property, boats, cars, et cetera, they said the taxable base was 38 million and change, right? Then in 2023, they told us it's 34 million. Then in 2024, they told us it's 41 million. So we've got, you know, a roughly $3 million, more than a $3 million swing over there, you know? It went down by roughly 4 million, and then it went up by roughly 5 million, and now it's down a million again. We've never gotten a reasonable explanation for why there's these wide fluctuations. So, you know, I think the right thing to do is we just leave that rate the same. At that rate, that would generate about $159,000 in revenue for the city. And at the new tax, the new property tax rate, a .199, assuming that passes here this evening, that would generate about a million five. You know, if you go look at the property tax, right, the base value of that, that has gone up significantly. In 2019, it was 545 million and change. In 2023, it was 631 million and some change, almost 632. And in 2025, it's gone up to 783 million, so roughly three-quarters of a billion dollars in property value. You know, again, big increases over time. You know, from 2023 to 2024, that was a 21% increase in that base value, and then it increased about 3% this year. So again, your property value went up theoretically if you're in the quadrant that was assessed by about 3%. We're proposing a 7.5% rate cut. So again, I just want to be clear to people, yes, we are cutting the rate. You might still pay more taxes. We don't control that, so.
I think it's important to note, too, that that is actually about $120,000, $125,000 reduction in revenue to us in our general fund.
It is, which we're making up for through other new revenue. Yes, Bernie? Yeah.
Plus on top of that, we realize that we're losing a lot with the Education Department leaving SD1. So all those, you know, 2,000 some hundred people that were supposedly down there are not down there. So we don't have any income from that coming up. And we have Frish's down on 3L who's now closed, so we don't have stuff coming from there. So we looked at that also to make sure that we're not, you know, cutting our head off to spite our face before it, so.
We're also looking at, because the revenues are also coming up, possibly maybe, what, end of the year, make a recommendation on lowering the insurance premium tax as well, so.
Yeah, which I think, you know.
It's on our radar.
Yeah, it's on our radar, and you know, Bernie, I've complained about that many times. I hate that tax. I'd like to see it go away entirely, but then you'd have to have a pretty good offsetting amount in some other way, and then that makes the analysis difficult. But to your point, yeah, I think we need to take a hard look at that, especially if these other revenues continue to hold up. You know, one of the reasons why we did not propose any cut in that now is since we're already going to cut the rate and have less revenue coming in in one bucket, but offset by other new revenue in another bucket, to a pretty good degree. You know, I think if the numbers continue to hold up, we will definitely want to take a hard look at reducing the insurance premium tax. I think that would be a big win for everybody, because you know, you're getting hit twice on that, too. And what I mean by that is, if your property value goes up, the insurance costs more, so you're paying more even, yeah, and it, because the value of property went up. So, yeah.
Mr. Collin repaired, right, Jason?
Well, one thing people need to be aware of is on their bills, if it says Fort Wright versus Covington. I know a lot of times in my house, I'll get mail that says Covington. Well, it's saying Covington, you're paying Covington's rate versus Fort Wright's rates. Covington's rate is considerably higher than what we pay.
I'm glad you brought that up, Jason, and we should put out some, you know, once this all works out, we should put out some messaging around this. Because I think, A, for your individual finances, yes, you definitely want to pay the Fort Wright rate if you live in Fort Wright. It's a lot less. But B, if you are sending your money to Covington, you're not doing yourself any good, right? And that's one of the reasons why I don't like the insurance premium tax. There's many reasons, but one of the main drivers is we have no way to audit it. We have no way to know if you live in Fort Wright, but your money is actually going to Covington, or vice versa. That goes both ways, right? So it's really hard to audit and know where the money's going. But yes, if you live in Fort Wright, you should check that and make sure that it's coming to us. So not only do you get the benefit of it as a resident, but the rate is a lot less. Okay, well, I mean, that's the whole thing. The proposal on the table at this point is to set the new property tax rate going forward to .199, which for what it's worth, will be the lowest since 2008. I'm showing 2008, it was 199.
2005, in 2006, it was, 2005, it was 1.94.
Yeah, but we were there, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, in 2006, yes.
We went up and down in that period. So it'd be the lowest rate since 2008. And then for the tangible property tax, we would leave it the same as last year, which was .385. So that's the proposal on the table.
After Brooke reads it, I know it's only a first reading, but do you still want a motion?
Well, it's a hearing.
Yeah, this is just a public hearing, so unless there's any comment, we're done. We're done. So unless anyone has any comments on this, we'll take a motion to adjourn out of the public hearing.
Perfect, I got you.
Wessels, second.
Second.
Okay, Collins, roll call, please, Carrie.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
All right, so now we'll go into our regularly scheduled council meeting. We've already done the pledge and the call to order and such. Anyone want to address counsel? Citizen's comments. Anybody got anything? All right, we'll move into the minutes. So the first set of minutes is from September 3, 2025, or I should say, the September 3, 2025 council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I think there's a typo.
In the minutes?
Yeah, the very first line, the call to order, it's a symbol.
No, and then, where is it?
So if you guys want to call out the typos, we can have Carrie note it, and then make a motion to approve the amended minutes with the corrections.
Under unfinished business, under the second reading of ordinance 1025, it says contracts are two years, 7/1/2025 through 6/30/2025. I think that needs to be corrected to 6/30/2027, correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
So anything besides that punctuation error and the date, everything else is fine.
So Carrie, do you know what you need to know to make those corrections? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended here for those corrections? Bernie, you're saying yes?
Yes.
All right, Wessels, second?
I'll second.
Witt, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Wessels? Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We have the minutes from the September 17, 2025, special council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? Collins, second. Weber, any additional discussion?
This was the meeting where we lost Councilman Aitland. I assume we will say a few words.
Yeah, I have some comments I want to make, but obviously the rest of you can all weigh in at that time as well.
I'll second, unless you need one.
Oh, no, I think we have a motion and a second already. All right, roll call, please, Carrie.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wood? Yes.
All right, and then lastly, we have the minutes from the September 17 caucus meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Weber, second?
I'll second.
Witt, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please, Carrie.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right, we have nothing under unfinished business this evening, and three items under new business. The first one being Resolution 02-2025 regarding City Government Month, which is this month, and thus, the idea behind the open house here today. Brooke, you want to read that, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution 02-2025, a resolution of the City of Fort Wright in Kenton County, Kentucky, recognizing October 2025 as City Government Month in conjunction with the Kentucky League of Cities, helping to highlight the vital role that cities, city officials, and staff members play in building strong, vibrant communities.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wessels, second? Collins, any discussion? All right, roll call, please, Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Wood? Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next up is the first reading of ordinance 11-2025, which will set the tax rates that we just discussed in the public hearing for fiscal year '25 and '26. You want to give us a reading there, Brooke?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 11-2025, an ordinance of the City of Fort Wright in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing the tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, upon real estate, personal and mixed property in the City of Fort Wright, Kentucky, and establishing the time and payment and penalty for non-payment of same.
And just as a quick reminder, the new rate after the second reading, right, will be .199, again, a 7.44% cut from last year on the property tax. And then for the tangible tax, or real property, or I'm sorry, rather, personal property tax, that will be left at the same rate as last year, which is .385. So, do we have a motion to approve? Go ahead, Jay. All right, thank you, Jay. Second, thank you, Finance Committee, appreciate, you know, not only you guys pushing this forward, but also all the work that goes into figuring this stuff out every year. I know you spent a lot of time on it.
We thank you and Jill. You guys.
I can't help it, Bernie, I'm a nerd. It just comes natural.
Loves the numbers.
Yeah, but, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no additional discussion, do we have a roll call, please, Carrie?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, and I especially want to thank two chiefs and Jeff for their being frugal in their use of the funds, because we couldn't do this without you guys.
Yeah, that's true, definitely true.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, well, first reading down. I can't imagine that we would veer off of this now between now and the second reading. So hopefully, everyone is going to appreciate the fairly large tax cut they just got this year. Okay, last item under new business, Executive Order 01-2025, appointments to the Board of Ethics. You want to go over that for us, Jill?
Yes, so we have two board members whose terms had expired. It was Mr. Joe Neeber Jr., who was our board member, and Katie Baker, who was the alternate member. I've spoken to both of those individuals. They are interested in continuing to serve in their existing capacity. That would reappoint them to the board until September 3 of 2028. So this resolution provides for those two individuals to be reappointed.
And just real quick, for anyone watching at home, the other two members are former council member Adam Feinauer and former council member and former city attorney, Tim Tyson, so.
And we do have a vacant alternate position. We've chosen to just leave that vacant at the time, so.
I mean, if anyone wants to do a thankless job for a little pay, let us know, but, you know. You want to, you want to, oh, well, even better. Oh, it's almost like being the mayor.
There's no pay.
I'm like negative $50 an hour here.
And the reason is because we're not allowed to pay them. That's part of the deal, yeah.
But I do it for the love, Bernie. I do it for the love. The love and that awesome mayor's sash and top hat. You want to read that thing?
Yes, sir. Executive Order Number 01-2025, an executive order reappointing Mr. Joseph Neeber Jr. and Ms. Katie Baker to the Fort Wright Board of Ethics.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Witt, second? Collins, any additional discussion?
Thank you to those people.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yes.
All right, yeah, again, thank you to the whole board, which again is Adam Feinauer, Joe Neeber Jr., Tim Tyson, and Katie Baker is the alternate. It's an important but kind of thankless job, so you know, they got to go through training, you know. It's not just sit around and hope everything goes right. They do occasionally have to go through some training and so forth. It does take some time. So we appreciate their continued service to the city. Okay, we're down here moving through this pretty quick. Committee reports. Margie, you got anything?
No.
Finance Committee doesn't have anything to add at this point, right? Okay, Jill, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Carrie, you got anything for us?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking for committee reports.
Yes, CAO report, yes.
I'm sorry, moving on. I have my report. I would like to provide some.
Sorry, Carrie, you have.
Sorry, Carrie. So I just want to remind everybody that the audit starts October 20, and they'll be in the office doing several days of fieldwork. And then, of course, we'll have a report prepared by the end of the year for each of you to review, and we'll bring Mr. Chamberlain back in for a formal presentation. I would anticipate that'll happen in December or January. Since you have taken the first steps to adopt the tax rate this evening, immediately after the second reading, we will begin or finalize the bill preparation process. We plan to have bills out again by mid-November. And then, of course, I want to thank everybody for their work this evening on the open house, and particularly our department heads. They've done a fantastic job of getting everything set up and organized, and I am very grateful for your dedication to this event and to making sure it all went very well. Jonathan, I also want to thank your contact, First Serve Foundation, and Justin, I'm going to slander the last name.
Bowen.
Bowen, thank you. And they donated 20 bikes for the raffle this evening, so it was very generous of them. But the work that they've done is fantastic, so.
That is very.
Thank you all very, very much.
Super, really. That's really nice, yeah.
Everything looks really good.
That does, it looks nice. You all did a good job. Any questions for Jill? All right, Carrie, let's try this again. What do you got?
I just want to add, so we might have, because I know that I sometimes get often called upon this very time, that every resident will receive a copy of the tax bill, whether they escrow or not. If you do escrow, please contact your mortgage company to make sure that they're paying you. We had a couple of double pay, this is a little process to refund them, but that's just a big reminder that some people are happy that they've already, you know, paid, it happened, so. It's just a courtesy copy for everybody to make sure that you see that the bill is being charged.
Do we put something on the bill or the letter explaining that to check with your escrow? Do you put something on there for that?
Yes, if it's not the one, let's just first we did this, so if not, I will, we get the other.
Yeah, big bowl.
And Carrie, I apologize. I do want to thank you and Niopa, too, because you both also put in a term, and I just meant I worked for the open house this evening. I did not mean to overlook you. I apologize.
Any questions for Carrie? All right, Chief Shuey, you got anything?
Just with the movement with the bridge project going on, I've been able to attend some meetings about the bridge project.
You were able, or you had to?
Because I'm sure they're wanting to. Yeah, we're, I'm going to make it a priority to get all these bridge meetings. This project is.
Do they have free food?
Lunch or something?
No, they don't.
Notice we both landed on the exact same spot. I see the angle now.
I was looking, I think they might have spent too much money on that building out there, so they cut all that out. Nonetheless, this is, you know, I can't imagine, it's my lifetime, I don't remember a project around here being as big as what this thing's going to be. I think we all know it's a big project. When you start seeing the plans and the timelines, and it is a humongous project. So probably maybe once a month or every other month, I'll try to touch base with you guys and give you sort of a timeline where different stages of this are going. They're trying to put a timeline to different parts of it. They have it broken down, you know, by years, and it's not necessarily a calendar year. It's sort of a year of when they start dirt on this part of the project, and then another part of the project. It's kind of mind-boggling to sit there and listen to it. You know, I spent a few hours out there with them the other day, and these guys have basically a four, five-year head start of putting this plan together and what this is going to take. But, you know, for four years, the bridge is going to be worked on, and that's not just the completed project with a lot of these approaches, both in Kentucky and Ohio, leading up to the bridge. So, you know, it's probably realistic that this thing could go on for eight years, you know. Nobody told me eight years, but this thing is, it's just massive. It's hard to wrap your head around it. And I think if we just stay abreast with their meetings and stay, you know, on top of it, we'll have an idea of what's going on. We're certainly not going to change the timeframe that's in place to do this monstrous project.
Thanks for the update, Steve. And, you know, as you guys on council know, but I'll just tell people at home, you know, we continue to periodically meet with the Transportation Cabinet people, myself and Jill, to try to understand, you know, where is the plan going based on what they've told us in the past versus where it's going? How does that still align? You know, as you all know, there have been some concerns here that they came up with what I thought was an excellent plan for the new overpass aesthetics and so forth, and they kind of changed that around on us a little bit. We did meet with them again recently, gave them some feedback. We're trying to get another meeting scheduled. Again, I don't want to put words in their mouth, because I haven't seen anything in writing that says this, but I think it's very unrealistic to think you're not going to get roundabouts. That's just my opinion at this point. Again, no one has said that in writing, but that seems to be what the plans show. That seems to be the direction they're heading, so I would just throw that out there. And it appears from what, you know, most recent conversations, all of the sound barriers and stuff that they had originally committed to, they're still planning to do, so people that might have concerns about that. So far, I don't have any concerns. Seems like they're still on track with all of that, which I think is really important for the folks that live in these, you know, neighborhoods that abut the expressway. So, so far on that front, looks good. We'll see what they come back with in the next round. Again, we're kind of working on trying to get something scheduled. And my hope would be, you know, as things start to get a little more formalized, that we can have them come back in, present to council, and let people, you know, watching at home, kind of see where we're at. But that's kind of, that's where, did I miss anything, Jill? I mean, that's kind of where we left off with them the last time.
I sent Stacy an email today trying to schedule that meeting, so.
Did they talk about the emergency lanes at all, or?
They did. She, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
She did. She identified, because I sent a list of all of those items, and she identified that they had the list and they were still working through them.
Okay.
There were a couple of things that she identified that they were not able to do for whatever reason, whether it was the width of the span of the bridge, or, you know, their engineers had a different solution. She did indicate it was still in process, and they were still reviewing it, and they would get back to us with a formal response.
Did they address that extra lane in the roundabout, the side that they have?
They indicated that they had the information that we had provided to them. They didn't specifically address how that would be resolved. So, yeah, they did say they were looking at them. We had a kind of a short window to discuss a lot of projects, or a lot of components of the project, so we didn't get a resolution on any of it, but she did confirm that they have it on.
Dave, just for the people in the audience and out at home, people coming out of Kyle's Lane, trying on the upper side to go left, it's got a cross the traffic, and it takes them forever, because people are coming up the hill, and they don't let them in. So what David come up with was on the roundabout that's on this side, was to put another turn around to come back down. So coming out of, on the Kyle's, they kind of would make a right-hand turn, come up to that first roundabout, go around, and then they could go back down the hill. That would unload a lot of traffic on that side, which was a very good idea, so we're trying to talk them into that.
Sorry, I'm going to miss Dave. That wasn't my idea. That was the other Dave.
The other Dave, I said Dave Able again, yeah, you're right.
I'm not that smart. I just put a sign out there to say he went that way. So, yeah, I mean, that's where that's at for now. We'll keep you in the loop as much as we can. Just for folks watching from home that want to go see, I don't remember what the website is offhand, but they have a very elaborate website that provides all kinds of information about this, you know, and based on where it's at. So if you want to see that, if you just search Brent Spence Corridor Project, that'll get you in the general vicinity of that site. I think we've also linked it from our website. But, you know, I would also remind people, all we can do is make suggestions and take concerns. At the end of the day, the Transportation Cabinet and the Federal Highway Department do not work for us. It's the other way around. So, you know, if you have concerns or whatever, or again, you want to see what the status is, I would encourage you to go out there and look at their current information. And then if you have some kind of concern you think that we can convey on your behalf, you know, let us know.
But as you mentioned earlier, they've been very good on meeting with us and accepting our suggestions. They haven't acted on yet, but they've accepted them, so they're not saying, no, no, no.
Yeah, I agree, Jay. They've at least been receptive. No one has come back and said, yeah, that's just off the table, so. Now, when I tell them I want the thing in Evendale, my guess is they'll say no to that. You know, I can always go back to the overpass in Evendale.
And I do want to say about the sound barriers, because we talked about that also. And they met with the property, directly impacted by sound barriers, and whichever design they're leaning to, they're leaning towards as a result of those meetings specifically with residents. So they're at least listening to what's been said.
All right, what do you got, Chief Colma?
Just a couple of things. One, the St. Agnes Oktoberfest, the traffic detail that the officers conducted went very well. We didn't have any incidents, and I just wanted to get it out there to the public that attended. We appreciate everybody dealing with the updated traffic pattern on exiting the parking lots. It may seem like a little bit of an inconvenience, but that intersection there is crucial. And when people exit out on the Dixie Highway, sometimes the officers aren't seeing it, and it creates kind of a cluster. So exiting out on the Kyle's just makes it much more safer. So it might be a little bit more of an inconvenience for everybody, but, you know, the safety of the pedestrians crossing the street is, you know, our number one. That went very well. We just finished up active shooter training for all the employees at Noah's Ark Animal Clinic. That went well, and, I'm trying to think, I have one other thing. Then we had all the pistol team for the Police Department got second place at the Northern Kentucky Chiefs of Police. Northern Kentucky Chiefs of Police Pistol Match, so.
Can you talk a little bit about the Warner Traffic Study that you all did?
Yeah, so I don't have the numbers in front of me, I just came from the open house. But I do know that I went over top, over them, and I think the highest speed was 30 miles an hour, and that's a short stretch of road, so that is kind of quick, speed limit was 25, but...
Where was this?
It was on Warner.
Oh.
We're catching, thank you, catching vehicles, turning through Warner and Lurup to bypass the intersection, which is a decent amount of vehicles. I think our total count, 656 vehicles, this is for approximately a two-and-a-half-week period. But speeding, you know, five miles per hour over the limit, which is illegal, you know, there was only one vehicle at 30 miles an hour. Rest of them were 20 to 25 and 16 to 20, for the most part. And we have had a couple, so when I come into work, I come up from Madison, and there's been a couple of times where I'm sitting in traffic out here, and I'll see in my side mirror vehicles coming up, and I'll just get out and turn my lights on and block them and force them into turn in. So we do have officers that are sitting on Warner and Olivia in Kentucky in the mornings, sometimes, you know, call volume availability to monitor that in the mornings. I know it happens every once in a while, but, and sometimes, I'm not sure exactly what's going on in the interstates, but it gets backed up, and it causes this line to go all the way down past Reeves Drive, I don't know if anybody's seen that in the mornings. So when that happens, that's when we're seeing people just below Warner to cut into that turn lane and try and go straight. So, we're making traffic stops, we're trying to prevent them from doing that.
Anything on the new resource officer? I think I saw he started at St. Agnes.
He is, he's there, he's...
You guys know him, work with him?
Yeah, I've done it for years. He actually lives on Park Road, across from the Trolley Park. He was the former airport police chief, so.
Well, that's cool, I did not realize that. What we're talking about here, folks, is Kenton County hired a resource officer for St. Agnes, so. What's his name? I should know this, Jonathan, but I don't.
Matt Lambert.
Matt Lambert.
Matt Lambert.
I guess, one quick point I'd like to make, again, I know people have legitimate concerns about speeding throughout the city, and I'm not saying it doesn't happen, I know it does. I walk a lot, like Margie, you know, I see people driving erratically and not in a way that is conducive to being in a neighborhood full of kids on scooters and bicycles and such, and I see a lot more of that recently, too. You know, one of the reasons why we invested in these speed trailers is so we can get some actual concrete data. And again, I know sometimes people take it the wrong way when I tell them, "Well, there really isn't a speeding problem in your neighborhood," because that's not what the data shows, right? And I think we have yet another example here. I get when you're walking down the street and a car goes by you in close proximity at 30 miles an hour, it probably feels like they're going a lot faster than that, right? I see you shaking your head, Margie, again, you know, out there walking up, like, you know, sections of general that don't have sidewalk or Ford Henry or whatever, and so I get it. And again, this is not to make light of people or try to be offensive, I understand why it can come off that way, but this is one of the reasons why we do these things, so we can try to figure out, where are their real speeding problems? Because there are legitimate speeding problems, and then focus our efforts there, not in neighborhoods where it's not as much of a problem. So again, you said there was one out of 600, if I understood what you said correctly, 650 cars, one of them was at 30 miles an hour, which is only five miles an hour over the posted speed limit. So I mean, I'm from Kentucky, I can't do advanced math in my head like that, but one 650 is not much, you know? And it's not 45 or 50 or 60 or the kind of things people say, "That guy had to be going 60 miles an hour," or whatever. Again, I get it, I sympathize with you, I'm out walking in these neighborhoods myself, but I think in a lot of these places, it's not as egregious as it might seem. If however you feel like you have a problem in your neighborhood, you know, let us know, we'll bring the thing over, we'll collect some real data. Again, the goal here is not to tell you there's not a problem, it's to try to understand, where are the real problems, and focus our limited resources on those real problems. As a reminder, we only have 13 people in the police department, including the chief, who's a working chief. He responds to calls and so forth, you know, that's for 24/7, three shifts a day, and on top of all of that, again, you can see the numbers for yourself, we bring them up, this is typically the third or fourth busiest police department in Kenton County with 13 people. So again, it's not to make light or dismiss your concerns about speeding, it's to try to focus our limited resources on places where there are real issues, so. Appreciate the report, I'm glad you brought that up, Jill. Will we get these things posted on the website so folks can go see for themselves? And like I said, if you believe you have a problem in your neighborhood, email me, call me, call Jill, call the chief, we'll bring the thing over and see what we see.
We'll have to wait until it's done with the bike rodeo, because it's clocking all the kids with the bikes right now.
Nice.
The resource officer, does his radio talk to you guys?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
He's on county channel.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions for Chief Colwell? Okey-dokey. Also, before I forget, well, I think it's in this special announcements, I'll get to it. Jeff, you got anything?
The only thing I got is riggers putting final pavement down today and tomorrow on Pickett in general, so they should be wrapping up by the end of the week. They'll come back and edge seal everything at some point in the very near future, but the major headache is almost over there.
And refresh my memory, what's up next year on the street plan?
Hazelwood and elder reconstruction.
Okay. And as a reminder, folks, we have a five-year street program. We reevaluate every two and a half years to deal with changing conditions and traffic patterns and that sort of thing. If you want to see what's in the street program, that's out there as it stands now, it's on the website, you can dig into that, see where your street might be in the mix, so, just a reminder for folks. There is an actual process we go through, it's not like, hey, this is the mayor's neighborhood, let's do his street. It does not work that way, there's an actual formal process. And my street, although it is being fixed this year and I'm happy about it, it's been more than 20 years, so.
That's concrete, Ford, what can it take?
Yeah, oh God, let's knock it on the concrete.
Jeff, as far as sealing crack joints, are we into that yet?
Oh, yeah, they are actually getting pretty close on wrapping this year's program up. They've been working on that for about a week and a half.
Okay.
I talked to him the other day, and they're closing in on it. They have till, I believe it's middle of October to finish that.
People in talking to, and trying to extend our street dollars, in talking to our engineers, they're saying if we seal the joints in the street, the streets will last so much longer, so that's why we're making a...
It's one of the most important maintenance items you can do.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right, you got anything, Brooke?
Yes, sir.
Okey-dokey. Special announcements.
Mayor, if I could just quickly, I do want to bring up under building and zoning, that tomorrow evening at the Kent County Planning Commission, Chick-fil-A has an application that is going to be reviewed for changes to their drive-through stacking lanes, they're looking at extending those. I did have a conversation with them this afternoon, they're looking at revising that plan. I want to see what the response is in the review we get from PDS, depends on what their final decision is, but we may need to review that application more in depth once we get...
Is it different than what we saw?
It is different than what you saw based upon what we discussed this afternoon, and it might work out, I need some time to think about it still, I might want our city engineer to take a look at it as well as get PDS staff's opinion on it, but they want to change how that service road is accessed across from the access off of Madison, so it could potentially work, I just think we need to look at it a little bit harder.
So it does come to council for a filing?
It will, there will be a recommendation from PDS, I'm sorry, from KCPC. You'll have 21 days to intervene if you'd like to do something different. So, we'll have to look within that 21-day period, but potentially, if they make changes, we're gonna want to review that closer. I did suggest to them that instead of going in there with a change that PDS staff had not reviewed, that they consider tabling their issue until the next meeting, but they had people that were flying in from out of town to attend the meeting tomorrow evening, so they didn't want to make those changes. So I referred them to their staff to make, they have that discussion, but we're gonna need to see what that changes, because I'm concerned how that traffic will be impacted crossing those intersections from the Freshest Development as well as the Burger King site.
I'm about to give you something else to do, but is there a need for anybody from the staff to be there at the meeting?
I don't think so tomorrow evening.
Is there free food?
There is no free food. Jeff and I both attended the pre-construction meeting, and then I had a meeting with them this afternoon. I think we're just, we just need the recommendation from KCPC to see what direction they're gonna move in, and at this point, it really depends on what plan they decide to truly submit for approval.
All right, special announcements, we have a thank you letter for Officer Keller, which is unfortunate since he is no longer with us. He decided to seek greener pastures in the private sector, which is unfortunate. I think Brad did a great job for us, filling that position is a big loss, and I think this letter from Chief Stanley in Park Hills is just indicative of that. He said, "I'd like to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude for the assistance provided by Officer Brad Keller during our agency's call in 1133 Extra Drive on August 2nd. Officer Keller's support played a crucial role in achieving a peaceful resolution to the situation. I truly appreciate the time and effort he dedicated to the incident. I want you to know his willingness to help to not go unnoticed, please convey our appreciation." So, again, it's unfortunate that Brad is no longer with us, because he did a great job, which reminds me, we do have an open police officer position, you know, we continue to post that out on social media and so forth. I would ask everyone from council to share that, everyone in the audience to share that, the goal being to reach the maximum number of qualified candidates and get another awesome officer like Keller to take his place. And we have another thank you letter for Officer Batustak, which is also from the Park Hills Police Department, and references the same incident and essentially says the same thing, so I won't waste your time reading it all to you.
Yeah, a little more detail about that, is there was a gentleman with a gun inside of a home, and they were having trouble communicating with him, and the Fort Wright officers, Batustak and Keller, were able to go over there, and they actually got in contact with him and talked, de-escalated the situation and talked him out.
Very nice.
Yeah, great work, they did a great job.
And, you know, I say this to anyone that will listen all the time, even in a place like Fort Wright, where we don't really have problems with crime and so forth, you just never know when an incident like this is gonna arise. You know, police officers in particular, not that the fire department and EMS and so forth, aren't also dealing with dangerous and difficult situations, but you just never know when you're gonna walk into something that could potentially turn into a gun battle at any second. So, just like to remind folks, you know, you should be grateful, we have people like the chief and his team that will go into these situations, basically want to walk into danger, and, you know, you never know when it can go horrifically wrong. So, speaking, at least for myself, I very much appreciate what you all do, and I love to see this kind of feedback, because I think it just makes the point that, again, these are difficult and dangerous jobs, and you guys are doing a great job at it. Okay, one last commendation here, also for Officer Batustak, let's see, my guys wanted to share this with you, big thanks to Officer Batustak for helping us with the situation, which involved a missing autistic child. We appreciate the continued assistance by your department, chief nader, city of Fort Mitchell, and there's some background story there, so, again, nice job. Please pass our thanks along to Officer Batustak. And then lastly, unless you've got anything else that I might have forgotten, Jill, want to send a special thank you to Ruddler for partnering with us again, and also year after year for the annual Community Shred Day, and thank you to all the staff members from Fort Wright that helped staff that to make it easy and painless for folks to come up. As a reminder, we've been doing this once a year, usually in the fall, for some time, Ruddler is the key sponsor. It basically costs us nothing other than some time, they bring up a truck, and you can basically pack up whatever sort of things that you want shredded, sensitive documents, and, again, I'll put my tinfoil cybersecurity hat on, despite the fact that this is paper, not electronics, people will go through your garbage to get documents that have sensitive data that they can use to steal your identity and steal your money. It is a real thing, talk to anyone in law enforcement, talk to anyone in the FBI, they will tell you this is a real thing. So whether you shred stuff yourself, whether you burn it in your fire pit or whatever, if you're not, this is an excellent opportunity. I can tell you, every year, my dad has a giant box of stuff, and every, I couldn't bring it this year, Jeff took care of it for me, God love you, Jeff, thank you, I brought it up in advance. But, you know, we drive up with a big box of stuff, we drive through, we hand off the box, you're on your way, usually in five minutes or less. So again, I think this is a super valuable service, I appreciate the staff putting their effort into it, their efforts into it, and really appreciate Ruddler, again, county company, based here in Fort Wright, great corporate citizen, and we really appreciate their ongoing support of this program, and just the fact that, in general, they're a great corporate citizen, so. And I think that is everything on the agenda for regular session, yes. So, we, council comments. I want to say something about Dave, but I thought you guys might too, just in the regular council session, so Margie, I'll start with you.
Before I talk about Dave, I'm just gonna remind everybody that we do have a citywide cleanup day, our second fall cleanup day is scheduled for October the 18th from 9:00 to noon. That's our second time we're gonna do this cleanup in the fall, and I want to thank the volunteers in the city who are picking up on residential streets that allow us to then, on cleanup days, focus on those main streets in the city. So far this year, we've collected six bags of trash off of Valley Plaza, 31 bags off of Henry Clay, 28 bags...
Which is completely insane, since that's essentially a residential neighborhood. 31 bags, it's nuts.
28 bags off of Mount Vernon in Beaumont, four bags off of Lurup in Werner, 33 bags off of Park in George Huser, and 18 bags off of Amsterdam and Pickett in general. So, 120 bags of trash our volunteers have collected so far this year, and then hopefully we'll address the main roads in October. So, thank you all for that.
And we will promote that, it's a great way not only to beautify the city, but also meet your neighbors and get some service hours in if you need them.
So, thank you to Dave Abelin, he's just been, he's been really amazing to work with. He is a quiet voice of reason, and the amount of thought that he always put into every comment was just really extraordinary, and really enjoyed working with Dave, he will be greatly missed. Jason.
Before I say something about Dave, just from the St. Agnes Oktober, sorry, my brain's still mush from the weekend.
I can read your brain.
I appreciate that, most people can. Once again, thank you to the city for providing police patrol, several people commented on how nice it was, how bright it was, how easy it was to navigate. You know, once again, there were no problems, no issues, so it was a great big help, plus we appreciate the public works coming up Monday morning and making the straw bales disappear for us, because we're tired by then, and we really don't want to have to carry them.
We're very grateful to take those off your hands.
It works out great for both of us, the things look fantastic already, so, that's our way of donating a little bit back to the city. As far as Dave Abelin goes, he was great for me, I'm the new kid on the block here, and I've known him for a long time, so I could call him and just ask questions, how does this work? What is this? He was always willing to take my call, answer, and it was great for kind of my onboarding, so he definitely will be missed.
Jay? Just to give, just want to, again, say that Dave was a really good person to work with on the council, we're missing, hopefully the next individual will be as good as, if not better than Dave, so we're looking forward to that, that's it.
I'm glad the bomb's gone. I'm teasing, do not quote that.
Wow.
You know, one thing, what's really unique about our council is how well we work together. You hear about differences in the city, and Dave was a big part of that. You know, we all have differences of opinions and views, and we all work together real well, we're kind of fairly like-minded, and I think that's what makes it a great team. Our staff works great with us, I think we jive well with them, this is a great team to be a part of, and Dave, losing Dave out of that's a big loss, you know? So, but we wish him well on the golf course.
I don't think he's gonna see much of it.
I think it's where he's at, I don't know where he's at. That's all I got, thanks.
So a few last comments, and then, you know, first off, we are inviting Dave back towards the end of the year to have a more formal send-off and give him some of the traditional gifts we send, or give to the outbound council members. You know, Dave was here for 13 years, I think he did an amazing job. Dave was kind of a quiet guy generally, but usually when he had something to say, it was worth saying, you know? For those of you who don't know, Dave is an engineer by trade, very logical, very numbers-oriented, one of the reasons why he and I got along... One of the reasons why he and I got along well is because he liked the numbers and wanted to dig into things. He never made rash decisions, he was always super reasonable, and, and like I think everyone up here, for the most part, could be, he could disagree without being disagreeable. You know, he would make his point, you know, he would stand on his principles, which thankfully mostly aligned with us, generally speaking. But I mean, Dave is a huge loss. I mean, there were countless times where we had long discussions about things, and you know, he helped me see things a different way than I originally saw it. He's a lot less rash than me, and happily, some of that I think has rubbed off on me over the last 13 years. But yeah, Dave's a great guy, did an amazing job for the city, super dedicated, super devoted. I mean, grew up here, you know, kids live here, parents live here. I think it would be, you'd be hard pressed to find a person that was more dedicated to the city and truly did what he believed was the right thing. So it's a big loss, it's unfortunate, I understand, you know, his, because, you know, Dave had been talking to, I think, everyone up here for some time, hey, my job keeps adding more responsibilities, I can't really keep up with it. And, and to Dave's credit, you know, he didn't want to just basically phone it in, he didn't want to keep missing meetings and, and basically just keep his name on the list and not put in the work. And I think that also, you know, speaks a lot to his character. So I consider Dave a good friend, I think he did an amazing job.